Let's call this meeting to order and recording of members present.
McDermott.
Here.
Harper.
Yes.
Slater.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Reading of the open meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting. Witness my hand is fifth day of September two thousand seventeen.
Consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of a discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. Three-one, addition of items of any new business to the agenda?
Have none.
Three point two, minutes of August seventh, two thousand seventeen, regular board meeting.
You want to read them all and then come back?
Yep. Approval of the treasury report on the status of funds and investments, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund, like to activity account fundraisers, if any, approval of inter-account transfer in the activity account, if any, approval to declare items as surplus property.
Why do you not see any errors in the minutes? Did anybody else catch any or anything? Three point three, approval of treasury report. We really don't have one until we get to active budget, but sure did make up a comparison so that you can see that general fund FY seventeen, we had eight million five, eighteen, nine million, so we've incurred five hundred forty-three thousand more this year than we did a year ago. More comparison, we're down in spending by twenty thousand dollars so far this year. Revenue comparison, we're up at this point in time, ninety-two thousand. Gross production is again two hundred five thousand. Last month we had two oh eight. I don't know how this Houston's going to affect us, to be real honest with you. Gas has certainly jumped up to two fifty-one, and Dallas it's three twenty-five, and they were out of gas for three days in great vine area, so. But still we're in good shape. We'll get more information when we get a live budget and so forth, we get some more information there. Investments, still good shape, maturity and so forth. Looks like we got right at ten million six seventy-two in investments, and everything looks good there. Any other questions there? Activity count, if you just look at the activity year to date, you can see that our activities are in pretty good shape, and our individual school activities, I will talk to you a little bit later about a gift that we got for all of our schools, but we do have money in the activity counts, and they're in pretty good shape at this point in time. Fundraisers, we have several cheerleaders trying to buy new uniforms. I want to tell you that there may not be a labor auction football this year, but they put it down just in case to incorporate the cheerleaders with that, but we're trying to get away from those types of things. But they want to sell basketball t-shirts before basketball, football t-shirt before football. Also rusty cuff sale, and I was told that that may be the best fundraiser they have, and I don't know what it is, but I'm sure I'll find out.
You'll be buying one.
There you go. And then we're going to host a mini cheer camp during basketball, dates be, and I think little girls have really asked for that continuously. And then we have middle school athletics, selling boosters for twenty-five dollars and putting it up in the gymnasium and so forth. Our high school athletics, super sport ticket that goes on annually. Cross-country, they want to sell our t-shirts to help with their expenses. And vocal, the Miss Alva contest, they were already approved, but they just now got the form in. And then cheer again. We've got math-athon, spelling-athon, so now we're going to have jump-athon. And vocals are cookie dough sales, and Alva Elementary Booster Club, just any kind of donations. I saw in their activity count, they've already got like three hundred thirty dollars from their dues, so pretty normal fundraisers at this point in time. Inter-account transfers, we're dispersing the basketball receipts to the different activities, and also we made an error, we listed La Club on there, and it should have gone to the SCCLA, so that's been corrected. Surplus items, from Lincoln, Black and Decker blower, a camera tripod, available seal, folding chairs, old light fixtures, small student chairs, scooter boards, so forth, so. I don't know what we're going to do, but we're going to have to do something because we are overloaded again with all of our surplus. You know, we've had surplus where we'd be dinner all day, wouldn't sell hardly anything. I don't know if it's just tell them garage sale, come and pick it out and go type situation, or we just take it someplace and dump it, because we just, people just don't seem to want anything, so we'll be discussing that in the future.
We've started putting our surplus stuff out by the dumpsters.
And they pick it up?
It's gone by morning.
I could get the whole bus shed down by the middle school, take it for fifteen hundred dollars. They do all of it. They load it up, they take it out, get rid of it. And I'm going to tell you that that's probably dinner ten years. When did we have our last fifteen years? But it's full there. I called a couple of junkyards to see if they wanted to buy any of it to get it out of it because of the, maybe some iron, but they don't even want it, so. And then biggest thing is we got a lot of old computers that we're going to try to get somebody to come by and buy, but we'll be discussing it with you in the future, but pretty normal on all of our consent, so I would make the recommendation that the board approves consent agenda as presented.
I make the motion that we approve consent agenda items three point one through three point seven.
Second. Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott. Aye. Vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for fiscal year eighteen. General fund, show up, go read those. General fund number eleven, PO number two fifteen through three thirty-two, totaling one hundred fifty-four thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and two cents. The change orders, number one through three thirty-two incorporated in payroll, purchase order number five zero one seven four through five zero one ninety zero, totaling four hundred forty-five thousand eight forty-seven eighty-five. The change orders, number fifty thousand through fifty thousand one ninety incorporated, per year-to-date total of nine million one hundred fifteen thousand four fifty-six fifty-five.
And if you'll go to your attachment, you'll see our expenditures. Two fifteen, Apple Incorporated, bought some iPad replacements for new teachers and for students at Lincoln. Vocovision is our contract with our psychologist, and also hopefully we'll be doing some behavior work with them type of thing. Renizos Learning Systems, that's our star AR software at two twenty-one. Two twenty-three, I believe is for two active boards at Longfellow, and we're taking the portable ones and moving those to Longfellow, so that we have touch tone Promethium boards at Longfellow. And then two twenty-five, Ross Transportation, that's partial open PO for DUC Parks and so forth. Two thirty-seven, Goodrich Plumbing, that is the air conditioner and the high school vocal room. And two thirty-nine, we bought some furniture for the portable buildings, some cabinets, some small tables and that type of thing. Fair Plumbing, two forty-six, Washington Classroom. Was that the classroom?
Yeah, it was Classroom, West side.
Right. And then two forty-nine, Curriculum Associates, special ed testing materials for all of our testing for special needs students this year. Two sixty, Longfellow Software, and two sixty-three is our partial cleaning for this year. Two eighty is a software program that we share with Career Tech, and all of our ninth graders coming in that don't pass the reading, go to this software, and it's really been beneficial. I know they use that to Career Tech a lot.
Do other kids use that?
Yes, they can.
Other than just the freshmen? Isn't that the speed reading?
Yes, we use that at the middle school for students that can't enroll in like a reading class if they're scheduled, you know, conflicts with one of the reading classes, or if they just need an extra class, yes.
That any student can enroll in. And then three twenty-two, had opportunity to buy a dump truck. We're always looking at, like behind the retaining wall, it's trapped, we've got all that dirt that's washed down there, but we don't have a truck or anything to haul it out with, or the dirt of different playgrounds that we need to haul, fill it, haul them so forth, and this was a good price on a little dump truck that we could use, and so we went ahead and bought it. Three twenty-seven, that is due to a semi going through our snake drive and taking out all of our internet and communications through the PA system and everything out there. Nobody knows who for sure did it, but we just know it was down, so we couldn't turn it in or anything. Just happened after delivery, so that's what it's going to cost to get the internet out there. And we checked both, was a lot of different people, and this was the best price that we could give them for what we needed. That's a sore spot in the market. And then three thirty-two, we're going to do some work on boys' basketball locker room to improve that, much like what we have in a girls' locker room. Any questions? Lynn, point of order. Do we have to read the whole thing, or can we just say we're going to discuss four point two? So if you want to do that, say you need some reading.
Do you want me to read all that building fund?
No.
Okay. Year-to-date total of one hundred twenty-nine thousand one ninety-two ninety-nine.
Okay, and if you look at your expenditures in the building, we've had some glass repair at Lincoln, purchase order twenty-three. On purchase order twenty-four, that was the increased cost to us to make sure that we had portable buildings at Washington Handicapped and Cecil. We put a new PA system out at the softball. We have not had a PA system there at any time other than a portable one. And then thirty-two, we had to buy some weed eaters and so forth because we're doing our own lawns at this point in time. And then we had air conditioning unit, purchase order thirty-four down to middle school that we had to replace, and that quote was by far the best. It was about two thousand dollars under the other quotes that we had.
Are we keeping like a ledger of all the units and when they were replaced?
We're trying to.
Okay.
Each school is doing it.
They all need to be in data and everything.
Any questions? Four point three, Jane.
Okay. Child nutrition fund.
It seems like when it goes, it goes, but we've had to buy two milk boats, one at Washington and one at Longfellow, and they're expensive. And then the software that runs all of our students going in and so forth, that's the chocolate ball, and it's twenty-two hundred dollars annual fee, so that's the expenses so far out of child nutrition.
For gift fund?
Don't have any gifts this time. So unless there are questions, I would recommend to the board that they approve four one, four two, four three as presented.
A second.
Kane.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott. Aye. Number five, principals reports.
I think they're going to combine a little bit on this because the biggest impact I think we've done with the elementary is the shifting, the whatever of our AR points, correct? So I think Mr. Phedys is spokesman.
One of.
One of.
Mr. Argon, were you starting this off?
No, guess what?
Okay. We, in the effort to continue to align our schools, we have decided that we wanted to propose our, an AR program, kind of reinvented. I know we get, in the past, kind of all the flack of whether or not this is the direction we want to go. We felt strongly that it's a good program, we just need to put a little bit more effort into aligning it and to taking the feedback we've gotten over the last few years from staff and from parents, and to try to make it a program that will be successful for everyone. So in doing so, we discussed several points, and I think all of us are going to take different points throughout the presentation. First off, we had to identify the reading level of each child. And this year, kindergarten through eighth grade, all of our students are taking the Measures of Academic Progress test, also known as MAP, and this test will be taken three times throughout the year, but the first one is in the fall of each school year, and this will give, assign all of our students a Lexile range, and we will use this Lexile range to determine where the child needs to be reading in the AR program. Prior to that, we used the AR calculator, and I think someone else has been going into that. This is one of the changes we made, is that we felt that the Lexile was a better measure of students and was going to push them further in their reading.
So, you know, one of the biggest things, controversies, I guess, is determining, you know, what your goals are going to be in each class. AR has a goal calculator, and so you basically put in the student, you put in their grade equivalent reading level, and then you estimate an amount of time that you're going to spend per day reading, and then it calculates kind of a range for you. And so I threw you guys up there with some different reading levels in thirty minutes, and so, and you kind of have to, you also tell if they're curatable that this is a nine-week goal period or a six-week goal period, and so you can see how those things are kicked out, and it depends on, you know, reading level, at how many points it's expecting you to get in that timeframe. It also gives you this zone of proximal development, this kind of sweet spot for where kids are challenged, and they're going to grow the most. If we go to the next slide. The issue here is, you know, what is a reasonable amount of time for the average kid to read? We threw out thirty minutes, and that's thirty minutes, not just in school, but thirty minutes at home and at school. We discussed differentiated goals, which would be the higher level, the higher your goal would be, or the lower your level, the lower your goal would be. And Renaissance is the county that owns AR, they consider that to be best practice. Now, throughout our discussions as principals, we picked a lot of brains of other schools and teachers, and I talked to a teacher who attended Alva Middle School, I don't know, ten years ago probably, and they had differentiated goals at the middle school at that time. What they found, and I've seen this at another school in the area, was your smart kids would go into the STAR test, and they would intentionally do poorly so that their goals would be less. So we decided not to go with differentiated goals as a result of that. So we chose to go with a level goal across the board for each grade level. So we go to the next slide. The other issue that we ran into was that middle school goals seemed to be quite steep considering that this is the beginning of when they're getting into activities, and they have, they have less time to read than they would in grade school. So we were also looking at the lower elementary goals and thinking, maybe those were too low. Those are the times when they're formative, those are the times when they are really excited about it, and we should capitalize on that time, so. And this isn't in the slides, but what we did was we kind of, we set those goals at eight points for kindergarten and first, and second, and then nine for third and fourth, ten for fifth and sixth, and eleven for seventh and eighth grade. Well, and this just kind of happened by accident, but we thought it was a really good deal, was that each time we made a transition from one campus to the next, that goal did not change, and so they could just kind of carry on with that, get used to things, and then we raised the goals. At this point, you know, we figured we're going to see how this goes, get some feedback from parents, teachers, and maybe up those goals in the future, not this year, but we want to see how things go. You know, I'm a fan of AR, I think it's a really good program, I think it can be very impactful.
Okay. Next is ninth section, which is over the dates. Simply put, the first three nine weeks' goals are just about nine weeks apiece. We did, as you can see, like from December until January fourth, we took off for Christmas. In the past, I don't know, I mean, the kids, we encourage them to still read over Christmas, but that's not one of the days that counts against them. As you'll hear later on in our spiel, after the, you know, we're wanting kids to complete their goals by the third nine weeks, and so the fourth nine weeks is a very small section because at the end we also have to have our librarians checking the books and do things like that, so the fourth nine weeks doesn't play into the incentives as much. Now, go ahead, we have some changes. Accelerated Reader will not be used as a grade for any class, anything. Another issue that we had was students who have a Lexile level above their grade level are allowed to read at grade level or but. So what that means is if I have a kid that comes in and he has like a Lexile level of six hundred, okay, but he's like in fourth grade, it may seem like he needs to be reading these books that are way out of his range, so we want to allow that child to read anything from the fourth grade level and up, so it's not just those six hundred books, because some of those schools may not have books that are really adequate for his reading level, or maybe on a topic that he should be reading, you know, if he's a fourth grader. So we are looking at that also. Students are allowed to bank points. That means that over the summer, if Katyn wants to go and he wants to read twenty books, he can come in, he can test on those books right off the bat and be finished with AR for the year. Now, the reason that we chose to do that though is most of the time, those kids that are good readers, they're going to continue to read, but that also gives them a chance if they know that they're playing football, they know that they're playing basketball, they can read ahead and get everything completed before, you know, their lives gets super, super busy. Whenever you go in and take an AR test, if you get a hundred, your book will tell you how many points it's worth. So let's say the Grapes of Wrath is worth twenty points. If you go in and you take all twenty questions on it and you get them all correct, then you are awarded those twenty points. But let's say that you only get like a sixty on it. AR has set up exactly how much each one of those will be worth, so you're not going to get the full twenty points because you didn't score a hundred on it, but you get a fraction of it, and AR is the one who decides how many points you're allotted for that. And also no cumulative average will be required to achieve an individual student goal. That's something that we had last year, and that kind of goes back to, you know, if I took a test on Grapes of Wrath and I scored a sixty, that's not a great average. Now, I do get the points that were allotted, but in the past, you had to have a certain, like an eighty-five average, or you didn't make your goal, and we just took that away because if, we feel like if you're going to read the book and you're able to pass the test, you know, and be awarded points for it, then it shouldn't count against you, you know, what your score on that is, what your percentage is.
And guess what the incentives would be when your child meets their nine-weeks goal? And like Stephanie said, we're allowing that rollover of points or that buildup of points, so we're not necessarily looking, in the past it was, if you met this nine weeks' goal, you got this incentive. You met this nine weeks' goal, you got this incentive. Instead, we decided that we would do a big incentive at the end of the third nine weeks if a student has met seventy-five percent of their goal for the year. So this would, taking into account of a student who maybe didn't meet that first nine-week goal, but they met all their points up to seventy-five percent by the end of the third nine weeks, so they still get to participate in whatever that trip would be for the, for the schools. And each school will plan a trip, and we also decided to take this trip at the end of the third nine weeks, so we're not in that fourth nine weeks and everyone trying to plan trips, and it gets really hectic and crazy at that point. And we discussed also about taking trips within our community. Instead of always having to go out of town, there's a lot of neat things within a small driving distance, thirty miles or so, that we can do here and award our students, and we all want to do things differently, each building, so it continues to be something that they'll want to do, and so they're not doing the same thing year after year. And then each school will individually recognize students who have achieved their AR goals with the age-appropriate incentives. So what might be happening at Washington would not necessarily be age-appropriate for at the middle school, and this could be through a school economy, points clubs, or small prizes, and that's at the own school's, each school's discretion of what is appropriate for them.
Okay, next slide. Put a label on it. I have two handouts going for you. I know that you've heard of Lexile before, I think, maybe. I know that you've heard of Lexile before, I think, maybe Ms. Lopez has talked about it before. But this is just like a little Lexile at a glance for you, if you have any questions about it, if you want one. Basically, oh, thanks. We just, we've decided to use Lexile as our level for students of reading. So like in the past, we've used grade equivalent, which when they take the test on STAR, which was Accelerated Reader, would tell them that they read between third grade to fourth grade, which would be like three point two to four point two. Well, we found that that wasn't exactly accurate, and Lexile is a better, it's scientifically proven to be a closer reading of what their reading level is. So it's recognized as a standard for matching readers with text, it's on our state assessments every year that we hand back to parents that have a section about what the student's Lexile level is. So we figured we should be utilizing that since it's recognized nationally, whereas AR grade equivalent is not. It's used as a reading measure on state assessments, and by using a common scale like Lexile, we're providing more clarity and comparability to measure reading. So, next slide, please. This is something that you can find on the State Department website, and it compares Lexile levels to college and career readiness. So in the education field, I can't remember what our Lexile is, but we have a range of Lexiles that we can read. What's cool about that is all reading text can be given a Lexile, it can't be given an Accelerated Reader grade equivalent. So this, you know, it makes it more realistic in real life for our students. Next slide, please. There's a lot of information that can be found on Lexile that we're trying to disperse to parents and to students. Lexile.com is like, that's where this came from. Students and parents can use this to access any time to see what any book might, what Lexile book might be. It's pretty easy to use. Our State Department website, I brought a couple of books too, so you can kinda see how we're changing. Like, this is like a regular label for our books in the library. All we have to do is just change Lexile and we put the Lexile number, so students can glance at this and say, okay, my Lexile is six hundred, this says six ninety, so that's too, too far above. But it's essentially the same idea, it's just a different number that's on the book, so. And if you guys wanna take those home and read them, we can.
This is what my level.
I will say that they all worked very hard on this, and the thing that I think is the important part of this is the consistency throughout pre-K through the eighth grade, because we're doing all the same things at each and every school. In the past, we've had little differences in all the schools. So consistency is a, is a great part, but there is some drama in some of our meetings and everything, and I attended those as a referee, because I didn't know anything about it, but they worked very hard, and I commend all of the administrators working on it.
Hot. If you'll look in the information that Mr. Parker gave you, you'll have an ACT paper that looks like this.
I think it's in my communications. Yeah, go to football games.
They told me I had to be really, really quick, so I'm gonna be really, really quick.
But in my communications, I was gonna put it on the ACT, so you can log on to the ACT, and Mr. Potter will go over it.
The biggest thing that I want to share with you is, if you'll look at the bottom line, and I highlighted this on, on my papers, but if you'll look at this bold face down at the bottom, the 2017 numbers, those are the ones that we did, right there, 2017. That gives you a five-year comparison, a five-year trend of what we have done in the last five years at ALBA with ACT scores. The, if you'll notice, we tested fifty-two kids this last year, as opposed to thirty-five last year. And that is up throughout the state, because the state paid for the ACT last year. So we had kids take the ACT that were not necessarily college-bound students, they are not necessarily students that have taken our most rigorous curriculum, so, and that has happened all across the state. So therefore, with the sample size being bigger, and including some of those students that haven't taken our most rigorous curriculum, our scores would be lower. That, that's just the way that it works out. Now, saying that, ALBA's scores are still higher than the state average in every single category, if you look at everything that we've done. We are still, we dropped down a little bit because our sample size was bigger, and we tested some students that, that haven't been in those classes, that would get them ready to take the ACT. But if you look at that, it also, it's still below the state average in everything that we've done, which is, which is outstanding. We always wanna do better, we always strive to be better and do all those kinds of things that we wanna do. But, but I do think that you'll see from those numbers that we get a good, well-rounded education, and, and we're having academic success even with the lower part of our students that don't necessarily care about school as much as the others, or don't have the after-school, after-high school aspirations that some of our students do. They're still getting a good quality of education at ALBA from the top to the bottom. And I think that's important to note that. The other, at the bottom, it talks about college-level coursework and different things, and our students being ready to do that. You can look at that, I'm not gonna talk a lot about that, but you can look at that, and also, there should be a second page that, there's a backside to this too, that you can, you can look at that too, if you're interested in looking at that, I'll let you have that. The last part of what I have is, we do those academic things, but our key club right now has been real active in, in the start of the school year, and a lot of things that have gone on. The things that they have done so far, or are getting ready to do, is they've paid at the middle school locker rooms, they take senior citizens to the fair that's coming up, they serve a free fair meal to community members that, at the fair that's coming. They also serve a luau meal at Beatles Nursing Home, they go work with the older people at Beatles. They serve the distinguished Goldbug, Goldbug meal, which is coming up for homecoming. And they also donated, out of their own pockets, a trunk full of cleaning and personal items. Sandridge was taking a truck down to the hurricane victims at, for Hurricane Harvey, and our kids at ALBA High School took a big trunk of stuff for them to take down to do that, so. So we have kids involved in a lot of academic things, but we're also involved in community things, and how the schools do, do what they do, so it's a good place to be.
Okay.
We wanna make sure all of you realize how much we appreciate you. I mean, that was a wonderful report, and we know you're working hard to take us to the next level, I'll tell the other girls when I see them, but we do appreciate you. We appreciate you too. So, and your work on all this stuff, it's, it's exciting, you can see that all those numbers go up, and all those wonderful things happen.
And the teamwork.
And the teamwork, absolutely. That's, that's nice. That's good. Pick a pen if you're bored.
I have some resignations. I've got Ray Valdez, Ray Deal, excuse me, as a paraprofessional. Also, I have Cynthia Lider as a certified teacher. And I have Emily Prater as a para. And one more. Katie McKnight as custodian. We just hired her, but he got a heck of a deal, and I can't blame you for that. So those are resignations that we've had so far. And then, because of resignations, we've had to do, and some other illness, we've had to do some reassignments. Mrs. Thirkhold, who is a seventh-grade math teacher, is going to go to the high school to teach in the place of Mr. Smith. We don't know how long Mr. Smith is gonna be out, but we anticipate probably the whole semester. Mark Carroll is having lots of problems trying to get things done in the IT department, and we moved Brandon Harding in as a IT support. So he's doing a lot of work for us, getting the MacBooks ready to go, getting ready for the math tests and all that at the different schools. Mrs. Whipple, who we hired as a co-teacher in special ed, is now going to be a seventh-grade math teacher at the middle school. And then Chesney Thomas is going to be the co-teacher for special ed and math and language arts area. So I think we've got everything covered at this point in time in those respects, but those things have happened, and we had to make those decisions. Part of my communications, I do wanna share with you that Sure Trust gave each school five thousand dollars for their activity fund, and that is to be used at the teachers' or students' discretion. So.
Twenty-five?
Five thousand apiece, so twenty-five thousand dollars is what they gave the school. And the teachers and principals are working on that. I think Washington's gonna use some of that money to buy a new playground, big toy playground, because insurance guys have been telling us for the last five years that ours have been very sick. So they're gonna use that money for that. And then I'm not sure what the others are at this point in time. Our Roman is a thousand forty-one. That's up twenty-eight students from our October count a year ago that we reported. So we're up twenty-eight kids. And I think you have a letter right there that we've been accredited with, without any exceptions again for this year. Laura Beth Hamel has requested a leave of absence and meets the qualifications for this, and she will have a leave of absence without pay for the first semester. Second semester will reevaluate, see what she does there. And then, last Thursday, we had a meeting with Rick Scott and our architect, and here are the dates and everything for completion. Our hope is to have a pep assembly in the indoor facility Thursday night before homecoming and so forth. But, so, at what we just discussed, grating's complete, many concrete work will start this week. The homecoming activities we discussed, final inspection will be on the thirteenth, cleaning September eleventh to twelfth, paint September seventh through the tenth. Tile floors should be through by September the fifth. HVAC wrapping should be completed by fifth or sixth. Ceiling tiles going up after the HVAC is installed, the seventh and eighth. Knox box is the emergency locking for the fire station, so if we have a fire, they can go, they've got a key to get in that and get in there. Well, we had one at one time. Mr. Bixler had it, and he said he left it there, so we're trying to find it. So we don't know for sure where that is. Also, the wall to install the HVAC had to open up a single door to a double door, they're going to go back and go with the single door, no cost to us, to replace that. And then somehow, we're missing some hardware for exit doors, the pushbars and that type of thing that was supposedly delivered to Mr. Bixler. So we're in the process with Mr. Easley, he's gonna give us, and then that will purchase that, no cost installation, and a couple of countertops and some cabinets that we're getting replaced and so forth. So we hope to have everything completed and everything by the thirteenth, that's our final check out. So those are the things that we've talked about. It had a pretty good discussion. I will tell you that according to the lady spokesman from Scott, the biggest delay was this big, huge humidifier that goes up in the ceiling, they all, what'd they order? April, she said, and we got it like three weeks ago. Because everybody's ordering the same time, and we're the last one, we finally got it, so it's up. So that was the biggest delay and all of that. So everything should be completed by the fourteenth, and we can have an indoor pep assembly for that night, because I guess we can't have a fire, bonfire anymore because the practice will be out to firefighters, and also we'll have some type of walk-through in the dressing room and all that type, to go along with that. So we'll have some kind of dedication that night also. Any questions there?
Steve, I, I, they, when they were here, I went out the next day and there was not a soul, not there, doing any work.
I didn't get a chance to go there today, so I don't know, but this is what we've got down.
People everywhere today.
Were there?
Yeah, and they've, they've made really good progress. Tile and the showers done, they've got, it's come together.
They pretty much agreed on the deadline, didn't they, Jane?
Yeah, they were very, very thoughtful, very kind, and, yeah, they're really done for us before homecoming, and they promised, so I think they will.
If we don't do that at, that night, we've also cleared to do a pep rally at Ranger Field, just in case. So we'll either have it in the indoor or at Ranger Field.
There's not the water fountain thing on here, but.
We took care of that with unleaded. That's our plug. Could not just get the bottle filler because of the drinks that we had, that I think it was nine hundred and twenty dollars, which is cheaper than what we've been paying at the other places to do that. So that's been taken care of, prepared plumbing. Anything else? Okay, items of current business. Ms. Dermott?
Seven-one, discussion with possible board action vote to approve professional development committee fund fiscal year eighteen. Washington, Teresa Rader, Longfellow, Melissa Mahary, Lincoln, Gina Denton, Al Middle School, Kelly Woods, ALB High School, Dana Manning, Administrator Madison Williams, parent Cindy Goss.
And I would recommend to the board they approve professional development as presented.
So move.
Second.
Dermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Seven-two, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the internal activities committee for fiscal year eighteen as listed. Les Potter, Cody Hooper, Taylor Sweatfinger, Tammy Duncan, Randy Nation, and parent Don Parsons.
And I would make that a recommendation to the board to approve that committee.
What are their responsibilities for internal activities committee?
They're the activity absences, and we have a policy on how many days a student can be gone in the School of Commerce and Sector Association.
Any motion?
I'd make that motion.
Second. Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Seven-dash-three, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the gifted and talented committee for fiscal year eighteen. Parents of elementary students, Jason Keaton and Allison Tucker. Teachers of elementary students, Gina Denton, Gina Denton, Danielle Fisher Berry. Parents of the middle school students, Megan Lear and Michelle Mackey. Teacher of the middle school students, Casey Adair. Parents of the high school students, Cassandra Scarborough and Melanie Gasper. Teacher of the high school students, Tammy Duncan. Administrator Stephanie Martini.
I'd recommend to the board they approve this committee.
So move.
Second.
McDermott? Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Yes.
Seven-dash-four, discussion with possible board action appoint superintendent to review results of national criminal history record searches for fiscal year eighteen.
And this is what we've done in the past. The girls do all the work, the form comes back, and I approve. So, somebody asked her, so I guess we'll stay with what we've been doing in the past. I would make that recommendation to the board.
I'd make that motion.
Second. Kane?
Yes.
McDermott? Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Discussion with possible board action vote to approve the revisions to the extra-duty assignments for fiscal year eighteen.
And your extra-duty assignments is in red, we have junior class sponsors, we have mentor teachers. Alternative. We have junior class sponsors, we have mentor teachers, alternative ed additions, teaching more of that. Kenneth McIntosh, we hired him, vocal music, junior class sponsor. Tiffany Mata, building sponsor. So all of those changes are in red. And I would recommend to the board that they approve the extra duty as presented.
I'd make the motion to accept the revisions to the extra duty assignments for FY18.
Second.
Dermot?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Aye.
7-6, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an offer of employment for the following non-certified positions for physical year 18. 7-6-1, advocate number one.
We have Seth Floyd that will be a para at the middle school, replacing one of the paras that we've lost. And then we have Sabrina McGee that will be basically a traveling cook from capital schools to recommend to the board for remainder of FY18.
Motion?
I'd make the motion to hire Seth Floyd as a para and Sabrina McGee as a traveling cook.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Dermot?
Aye.
7-7, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve mentor teachers for physical year 18. Gina Denton, Sarah Eckard, Jason Keaton, Dusty Horn, Melissa Maharry, Dana Manning, Karen Mead, Sherry Flader, Haley Simon, Krista Starbuck, Ryan Wilson, Kelly Woods, and Kendi Woodman.
And those people will be working with first-year teachers here to the ALBA public school system.
Is that a one-on-one thing?
Yes. And I would recommend to the board that this be approved also.
So moved.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Parker?
Aye.
7-8, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve a request from the Sacred Heart Catholic Church of ALBA to use one bus on September 23rd, 2017, to travel through Oklahoma City.
We have our policy that they must meet certain criteria, liability, that type of thing. At this point in time, they really don't know whether they're going to, but they wanted to get it in because they want to go to the application Oklahoma City later. So they will have to prove to us that they meet all these, that the board has to approve this. And so I'd recommend to the board that we also approve the Catholic Church for a school bus. And if they don't meet the criteria, they don't get it.
I would make that motion upon your recommendation of meeting the criteria.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Dermot?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Okay. Vote adjacquary session to discuss staff negotiations and the AEA contract. 2501, Section 307B, to vote to convene or not to convene in adjacquary session.
Need a vote?
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Dermot?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Every week.
You too.
Thanks.